We had a study done on it to see what it would take to bring it up to ADA compliance, and our consultant stopped counting at $2 million. And I thought, well, for $2 million, we can build a new facility. So, we're looking at the feasibility study of that. We have some properties south of town on Highway 181, and see about repurposing the land there at the corner of Fourth and C Street, so we can keep a presence in downtown Florisville as well. The last page is the one that the cities are most interested in. You see, we have a historical earnings distribution to our cities going back to 1994. In the year 2014, we distributed $937,000 to the three owner cities, 64% of which came to the city of Florisville. Your share in this year was $629,000. Based on our forecast for 2015, we look to be able to distribute $984,000 to the three owner cities. Again, you'll get 64% of that. Now, it will tell you that these projections were done based on the end of August. This is an eight-month projection. I can tell you that we had to estimate what we thought our energy sales would be for the last four months of the year. They are tracking a little higher than what we estimated, so fingers crossed, I'm hoping that $984,000 actually creeps a little higher by the time we close out our books at the end of January. So, it is forecast next year, I'm sorry, yeah, it's forecast next year that we'll send about $629,000 to the city of Florisville, divided equally over 12 months. And Mayor, that is my presentation, and I will be happy to take questions, or sit down, whatever you prefer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to item 3A, consideration and action to approve a 25-foot variance for 929 Goldie Street.
Yes, Mayor, it's a council. Councilman Bureau requested that this be on the agenda. It was on the agenda for the last time, but there was a misprint in reference to the addresses, so we had to bring that back. Also, for the future items in reference to our community, the developer director, she is not available tonight. Her daughter's having her Christmas event, and so she released her to allow her to go and attend her child's Christmas event for tonight, so I'll be standing in her stead. What you have before you is a variance for 25 feet located on 929 Goldie Street. It did go before Planning &amp; Zoning, and they did not grant the variance. The information that I received was that they did not think it would actually fix into the neighborhood in reference to that, but she is appealing for that decision, and she's here to answer any questions you have in reference to the variance.
Would it be conducive to the neighborhood?
They said it would not be conducive to the neighborhood.
In what way?
They just said in appearance, they did not think it'd be appealing.
Voice, voice, your system mobile.
It wasn't mine, the property is mine, and we've been missing from, at first they said that she would need to get the variance, and then said that I would have to get the variance. We've been trying to get it, and then they denied it, and then they had the wrong address, and all this stuff is going on, but the mobile home is going to be the unit of the year that it has to be at the end of this month, and so that's why we're trying to rush it. But it is in Florisville, it's over there in that mobile home on Sutherland Springs Road and that property has, she rents it, so she's trying to purchase the one that I'm selling. And they're having to move the mobile homes because the owner is a new owner supposedly, and they're buying new mobile homes to put in that area and renting them out for a lot more than what they're paying in rent for the lot itself. So, she's kind of rushed to get it, and I'm just on her behalf, and she's sitting back there, but she's a little nervous, she can't, you know, come up here and speak.
What's the feedback from the neighborhood?
As far as she knows, some of the people there, because she's been here all her life, her and Zebah, Jacob, and she's gotten some signatures from some of the people around there, but when they said no, she, the signature, she didn't bring it, but we can get it, maybe we need it, but we can get however many y'all need or...
They weren't included in the packet?
I don't think so. They're not required to give, but we did have a public, as a portion of the planning, it is put in the newspaper and advertised, and I can do that. We did not want to come and have any objections in reference to that. There was no public objections to that. We have not seen any, it's been on the agenda for several times, we have not seen any public objections.
This is the cost of the sewer plant?
From the gem, that, we'll be honest with you. Yeah, it's in between the Joe Bravo Home, and I don't know the name of there already, but it's in between two homes.
Is it committed to those streets?
That's where it's from, it's moving from there to Goldie. And I believe the customer agent of this unit is 14 years old.
Right down the road from here, we get to LeBey's, isn't there about six, seven trailers right here?
Yes, there is.
But it's on the other side of the street, but yeah, but still, there's six, seven trailer home, I wanna get a look.
Yeah, there's several, and some are really, really old, and then some old roofs that's just sitting there, so I think it would improve the area if it took something. Her mobile home is pretty nice, it's not worn down or anything like that.
Is that why it's not conducive to the neighborhood, because the others are older?
I can speak to why, the Planning &amp; Zoning, the staff has no objection to it, and the variance is there also because it's an issue with the tree, we don't want to tear down a very mature tree in reference to that, so it's also variance of a setback as well. That's where the 25 feet came. I cannot speak to why Planning &amp; Zoning rejected it, but they did. So she's appealing to you for approval, directly.
We've approved that variance.
Yes, ma'am, again, I cannot speak to why Planning &amp; Zoning, they just said that they didn't think it was conducive for that neighborhood is the reason why they rejected it.
I think we need to elaborate a little bit more, but I'll go and make the motion to approve a 25-foot variance for 929 Goldie Street.
I second you. We have a motion by Councilman LeBey's, second by Councilman Castillo. Councilman, please, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Higginson?
Yes.
And if I can, may I ask, since it's done, is it okay to, I mean, so we get a little bit of time from the 31st of December?
That would be taken up with the staff.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
I mean, ask many citizens' comments, anybody have any comments on this mobile home being built?
I think that picking up a tree, mature tree, is that gonna need to chop down?
No, the tree will not have to be removed.
It's a tree that's...
Call in favor? I propose. Question carries. Now we're gonna go on to consideration and action to approve a variance on lot sizes on flat property located on 1300 Hospital Boulevard.
Yes, Mayor, we have the owner and their engineer here presented. There were some questions that we had and requested the last time that we were here, and this item was tabled, and so it's bringing back to you, so this would be, we can run them together. But the CNA to approve the variance of the lots on the flat property located on 1300 Hospital Boulevard, in their packages under 3B, there is a description of a project, which I may refer to later, and actually, he has some larger plans. Would you like to bring up those plans?
So I got, and you have the plan itself?
As we're talking about the variance, and so we wanted to be able to see the flat size, and I think the last one was kind of hard to see on the smaller print, but this here was a larger plan. One of the questions that I believe it was a customer Nito that asked in reference to what type of homes are they rebuilding. Now, if you look at under City, the city does not currently have the ability to restrict manufactured homes, land use, but because you're asking for the variances, and I have checked with Chris Stewart, as well as Chris Hug, our city attorney, in reference to can be restricted, and because you're asking for a variance, you can put some quantity and actually define what can be removed because of the variances. Their recommendation is that each building permanent foundation shall be constructed on a slab or a grade. You can add that language in for your approval if you care to, okay? So we put the caveat there that you be able to address the issues and concerns about a manufactured home or a mobile home at that location. Does that make sense?
Wasn't the greater question, or a more important question, the water runoff?
That is the second one. That's the second one that we're talking about, in reference to the drainage. What we're talking about right now is the variance for the lots, so that's the next item. Yes, ma'am, it is. And just to caveat off of that, Mayor, if I may, on Mr. Castillo, they've also had subsequent meetings with our city engineer in reference to the drainage issue, so we wanted to bring that up, but that is the next item.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, Planning &amp; Zoning did approve this from the city. Our city attorney has reviewed the variances in reference to the lots, but the question that staff took away from the last one that was presented to you was actually the number of variances, the size of the lots, as well as what types of homes are they rebuilding. And as I said, you can add the language that can be more restrictive as to what they can do. The city, of course, you know, Chris Stewart did our land use plan, he's recommending to add a note to the plan as follows. Each building permanent foundation shall be constructed as a slab on grade and shall observe established minimum finished floor elevation described hereon. So that would address the technicality of anything that's manufactured homes or anything in reference to that. We don't currently have the ordinance that would restrict it, but this could actually put a caveat on it because he's asking for a variance. So you can approve the variance as long as he knows those type of things.
And you already agreed to make in those changes for...
I'm gonna have notes on the plaque, right, have notes on the plaque.
Yes, we did share the same information that you have, we have shared.
I'll go and make the motion to approve a 25-foot variance. I mean, variance on lot size on flat for property located on 1300 Hospital Boulevard, with the caveat of each building's permanent foundation shall be constructed on a slab on grade and shall observe the established minimum finished floor elevation described.
Before we continue, do you have any citizens' comments on this? Okay, then I have a motion by Councilman LeBey's, do I have a second?
And this is just for the lot size, Mr. Curry?
Yes, as you see, it is a cul-de-sac, and so sometimes when you're drawing cul-de-sacs, they'll likely change, some are larger, some are smaller, but I believe almost half of those lots will be a different change. Geometrically, it's really hard to say.
Okay, I don't have a second, so motion twice, for lack of a second.
And then there's no point doing the other, because you can't approve the plaque if it doesn't have a variance, because it won't meet specifications.
Is there a part to discuss?
Is there any action we can take at this point? We could, I don't know if there's a range concern as well, we could elaborate on that. So you have a packet on, related to the drainage issue. As far as the variance for lot size, it's, again, lot sizes are, we're not asking much for variance, they're only off by five feet or less. So it's minimal, it's minimal on how much lift the lot sizes are.
Our city engineer has approved it, and our Planning &amp; Zoning has approved it. That's why, you know, I was able to make the justification that, you know, if they can sign off of it and approve it, then it should be sufficient for the citizens as well.
Councilman, if you don't approve the plan itself, then you can't approve the drainage because the drainage is based on that flat, so they are tied hand in hand.
Correct.
So you have to, if you don't approve the plan, then the drainage doesn't matter because it's just to that plan.
I mean, perhaps the correct questions were asked for, you know, of the developer.
Well, he's here, the owner's here, Mr. Hyer's here, they reviewed it, they paid for the consultation to review with our city engineer, but the plan has to be approved first, so we put it in first. Otherwise, the project doesn't exist.
The variance has to approve first.
The variance, the plot has to come into existence, and then if you approve drainage or not approve drainage, that is the sequence that we need to go by.
We could continue discussing items that, any concerns or items that you'd like to discuss.
Is there a procedure for him to return?
Chris?
Yeah, I mean, if the council's on our grant, you can come back every meeting and request it, but I mean, it's gonna be one of those, you're gonna be hearing the same thing every meeting.
So if you care to take any action, you can care to table it, or no action, and then direct staff, and I can put on the next council agenda.
At this point, it just died for lack of a second, so, I mean, if someone wants to motion for it to be tabled, then it can be tabled, or denied.
How about if we just die?
Last one, same, I mean, well, this just...
You have to make appointments to table it?
Well, yeah, you have to make a motion to table it, but from the legal side of it, if you don't have any questions that he can answer, if there are any questions, I'd ask him now, because just tabling it and bringing it back again is just gonna be another item on an agenda, where he's gonna present the same information, and it's gonna be the same consideration from council.
But it is correct for me to say that there could be another action on the table at this point.
Yes, yes, your motion died, so now it's an open floor for them.
Okay, it doesn't directly sit them down.
Right, we've got in here that the motion died for lack of a second, so it's an open floor for any council.
Could I ask a question, Mayor? Is it the size of the variance that's being made this year?
Yeah, variance related, there's an exception, I can support that. It's only up to your comments, so. But I could kind of go through each page.
Well, the drainage issue is a different issue, let's say I've been... This issue, yes, is a variance, the size of lots are being made, and then also, what type of subdivisions is being built here, and what type of homes are gonna be here? I understand the graded slab, but, I mean, you as a developer have to have some type of idea of what you, what kind of division you're developing here.
It's a residential subdivision, what more can I say? I already explained that last week.
Okay, but, calm down.
No, no, no.
It's a residential subdivision, but what type of homes are they gonna be, 75%, you know, siding, are they gonna be 75% masonry?
Does it matter?
Yes, it does.
Why? Why, it's a single residential home, single family, okay? If I wanna make it stucco brick siding, that's up to me.
And it's also up to me to approve this variance, so at this moment, I approve it and vary.
Well, that's fine, who's pocket are you in? Come on, man, come on. This makes no sense at all. All I'm trying to do is develop a project for the good of the community, low-cost housing, can I get this resistance? And there's no basis to it, and you know it, and you know it. So somebody's pulling your strings, and you know it.
Mayor, I'm not gonna say it, stand.
That's fine, thank you, but you know the truth.
Thank you.
So you can do a motion to table, you can do a motion to deny the variance, you can do...
Do you can come back, right?
Yes. I'll make the motion to table the item 3B, I'm 3C. No, 3B. For variances on lot sizes on flat property located...
We'll take the table, we'll agree with our motion.
We have a motion to table by Councilman LeBey's, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilman Nieto. Councilman LeBey's, how do you vote?
I vote for it.
Okay, Mr. Castillo? Aye. Okay, I have a motion to table. Call in favor?
Aye.
I propose, motion carries. Four zero.
And then you'll also need to do a motion to table for 3C.
I'll go and make the motion to table item 3C, to approve park sites, home subdivision plat, preliminary and final concurrently and associated construction documents located on 1300 Hospital Boulevard.
We have a motion by Councilman LeBey's, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Nieto. Councilman LeBey's, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Castillo?
Aye.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Motion carries. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item 3D, consideration and action to approve and demanding chapter 150, six point ordinance, to include administrative authority to issue stop work orders and various penalties provided to the...
Thank you, Mayor. This is one that's coming back, it's been before the council before, and so we're bringing it back for a couple of reasons right now. One, the next three items all kind of tie together, and so if we're going to establish a permit that requires a temporary construction roll-offs, we'll need to have some enforcement mechanism. Another issue that mine just brought to my attention, that came in through city staff, is that there's a couple of construction projects that either just haven't sought any building permits at all, and decided that they're just gonna move forward, or haven't had inspections, and with those, the only avenue of redress that we have right now under the current ordinance is just taking it to court. And so that means filing, litigation, attorneys, and money. So this would be a way to have an administrative ability to go out there and say, you didn't get a building permit, you didn't get a temporary construction roll-off permit, any of those, a plumbing permit, anything, and slap one of those red stop work orders on, and then if it's violated, then there's administrative penalties in there, fines and fees and everything associated with that.
Chris, would that be mine? If they have utilities going, can they be cut off also?
That's a question, actually, for the utilities on there. If they've run the electricity out there, I guess Phelps would have to address that issue. For water and sewer, there's nothing in the ordinances that says those are specifically tied to a building permit or something like that. If it's a separate plumbing permit, then yes, you'd have the ability to go with that, but trying to shut off sewer without shutting off water is...
How about some of the construction sites that are operating that, right now, off of the same water meter and off of the same sewer line that their residences are on?
Right.
In other words, two businesses, a resident and a business, operating off of the same meter and same sewer tap?
Right, and if they've done that, to start getting a permit, a plumbing permit to install plumbing on another house, that would fall under here. If they've gotten some sort of permission to be able to do that, then obviously, they'd still be allowed to operate. Yes, sir.
If it was okay by the city to do that line and interfere with the right of way of the other one coming and adjoining to it, like, what's, La Puna's?
What would happen there? This would only go to if they didn't approach the city to get a permit to do any of the construction or anything. If they came to the city, and the city looked at it and issued the permit, then they'd be able to go along with what the city had decided, even if it's not technically correct, but that's why we have Mr. Hyer to review everything and things like that.
The stop work order is just a fine, or it's not a fine, it's just a stop work?
Well, it has a fine if you violate the stop work order.
If we continue to work on the...
Correct. Then it's $500 a day, it's a class C misdemeanor, and every day you do it's another $500. But if you get a stop work and you stop working until you can get it in compliance, there's no fine or anything, it's just fixing.
Have we already implemented this practice without the ordinance?
I don't believe so.
No, we have not, but we do have property with all Goldie, it's about two-thirds done that had no permit and no anything, and what has actually stopped it is only because Phelps would turn on the power, because we could issue them the permit if they didn't prepare to make the use of it. So we don't have anything, and so staff is waiting to be used, we don't have anything to stop them, we're only doing that.
Other than going to court and getting injunctions.
And most of the time, Eric, your utilities and stuff are tied to the permit, to your permit, so if you don't get the inspections for the water, the sewer, or the, your lines or anything like that, you can't get it until you get your approval on your inspections. And if you don't get your inspections, then you don't have your approval, and you shouldn't be provided water, sewer, or anything.
And a problem that we thought of with that is that only applies to new construction. If somebody's out there adding on a new floor to their house, and they've already got power and water out there, then...
We have no way to stop them.
But this, you know, the question I'm raising is basically on this situation of a house that's already being, that's two-thirds of the way through, and, I mean, how are you gonna go back and get a plumbing rough-in? How are you gonna get an electrical rough-in, you know, whenever, before it's even closed in, to where they can't even get an inspection of even the foundation?
Well, the house, the one that we're speaking of, it's on pier and beam, so you would be able to do a plumbing to see it, and, I mean, other than tearing out walls to see what's in the lot.
I mean, the other option is for a situation this dramatic, this is to go in place to prevent that in the future. For something that's already happened like this, then we would probably end up going to court if we can't do the inspections and everything else and saying, you gotta tear it down.
Didn't, didn't Mindy talk to Bureau?
Yes, we talked to Bureau, they can do some different type of inspections, whether they have to go and tear out some walls, or to look at some things, do some preliminary inspections and work with staff, certainly that we can sign off, but what we're asking for here to be, to say, we have to stop, we can't move forward, that we have the authority to do so. We could do so, but it would take a lot longer, a longer form, or a short form, and we'd have to involve this city attorney, but we need to be able to distinguish, say, stop, you cannot move forward, you cannot stop, until you come into compliance with the permitting process. We have, we have a lady that's on Goldie, she's flooding out the forms in reference to that, we're trying to go forward, what we wanna be able to do is to not let her move forward until all that documentation is there, especially the plumbing, the electrical, the roofing issue, the foundation should be able to inspect and get into having, you know, the permit allows us to inspect and have jurisdiction of that, but we never get into inspecting, she keeps building, and there's occupancy issue, that she won't be able to get electricity, sewer, or anything in reference to that, it's all tied into the permit.
Is this the only case that we know about, or are there others?
There are others. There's other two, whose permits have exhausted, the permit's only good for six months, the permit has run out, but we have nothing to distinguish to say, you cannot cease and desist operating and moving forward, we don't have that option. This order's will allow us to have the option to say stop, if you come in, you don't work any further.
And actually, the way that the current city ordinances are written, there are some fine penalty provisions in there, but they only apply to setback violations and locations that are deemed a nuisance. So if it's just a permit issue, it doesn't meet the penalty provisions of the current code of ordinances.
So when she said that the permit expired, would that, we still don't have a hold on that particular one?
Nothing to do with permits and issuing permits, there's no administrative, the only thing in the code of ordinances authorizes us to institute a lawsuit against it.
Do you have any citizens' comments on that?
Yeah. Be careful what you're gonna do when making those ordinances, because it's gonna bother a lot of people when it's what you're doing, stuck with their houses, so, just wait, you know, figure out what you're gonna do, then you start saying, because a lot of people when you're there, they don't have the monies to do other things with their pools, and what they're doing, well, all you gotta do is, you know, that's their property, they can do what they wanna do with their property, so just be careful when you start making ordinances, because you're gonna start plaguing the people again. That's all I'm gonna say.
And did you say this was only for new construction? Not add-ons? Did anyone say that?
Anything that require a permit, no, it would be for add-ons as well, and you have to be careful what you must add-on in additions, because it does require a permit and inspection as well. What we wanted to say is just a permit process, that this would give us a lot to say, you didn't do the process, you didn't do the permits, you didn't go forward with that, you just stopped, come in and do the paperwork so that we can have it in reference to do that, so that we can have track of that it was done. Come in and do the paperwork so that we can have the reference to do that, so that we can have track of that it was done right, that it was wired up right, that it's not a lean-to, and those kind of things, reference to be able to do that. It is important.
Even if it's an extension of the permit, correct?
Even if it's an extension of the permit. If your permit has expired, right now, I can't say, stop work. If your permit's expired, the way the ordinance is written, I can sue you and take it to court.
Because they have to pay again for another permit?
If your permit is expired, yes, ma'am. Yes. Because there is a provision in there to allow you to say, before the permit has expired, you can come and apply for an extension. There's a fee assessed to that, but you can apply and ask for an extension.
Is this particular individual know they needed a permit?
The young lady who, Ongolia?
Ongolia. I believe these people are from Mexico.
She's from Mexico, and she said that there they don't have to do that. We distance staffed by to tell them to do that, but she is an attorney from Mexico, so we could explain that to her.
But if she goes prior to start...
Yes, ma'am. We did notify her several times, but I have nothing in my toolbox to stop her or to sticker it or to flatter it. Because of the way the ordinances are written. We have confirmed with Veritas, our inspection services, and the city attorney as well.
So are we going to spend more money suing this person?
Not if he passes tonight. I can be able to say, stop work, and then if she continues to work, I can penalize her instead of the police department by to say she can't work. But what I have right now, I have to take her to court and pay your attorney hourly fee to go ahead and take him to court.
And I don't really like that. We do.
Most communities do have something to say, stop work. I can sticker it. It's usually a red sticker, you know, cease and desist order. All of that would give us be able to say to stop until we're able to make sure that it's where it's supposed to be to do, but right now, I don't have that authority to do so.
I wish we knew how many people have violated.
The, the thing is also, councilman Castillo, it's not just those in violation. I mean, the reason these permits are put in place and we're inspecting them is for, I mean, huge safety issues. You can't have your neighbor next to you having an addition or house doing their own electrical work, and then it's not inspected, it catches on fire, runs into your house, it creates, you know, creates a safety hazard for everybody around there. So it's not just the point of collecting a fee, stopping people from building homes or adding onto the houses. If you've gotta do it the right way, there's a right channel.
I understand that. What I'm asking is somebody who takes that we had in the past, the people who have violated it.
We've never been able...
Without getting a permit.
We've never been able to track it because we've never been able to stop it.
Permits are only for the...
Yeah.
Just like lots.
There's numerous peoples that have done add-ons and not had a permit.
And I believe that's what the new permit tech is gonna be looking for too, right?
Yes, we've had a lot of weekend, a lot of weekend orders. People do things for the weekend, and all of a sudden, you go buy one home, it's not a room, and all of a sudden, there's a room addition. And so you need to be able to have a permit and issue reference to this to say, stop. You don't have the permit, you can come in. Some people may not know. But right now, I have nothing to stop anybody to say, whoa, they committed, come in to make sure you're in compliance. How they're wiring the house, how they're reeling it off someone else's, we can't tell. How they're connecting the water, we have no idea. And you don't want to be able to allow people to talk into your water system, your engineers here, and tell you they can contaminate your water system. They may not have the proper RPZ, the backup device in reference to protect to say water only flows in one direction and not contaminated sucking it back into the system. They don't have the right gaps in reference to what you have to have in a sink or a bathroom for somebody wanting to add a muggle on kitchen to the back of their house. It's important for us to make sure it is done correctly. And it also adds to the value of their home, which also about equals to the assessed valuation of the whole city. So it's very important for us to have compliance. This is only a tool to help us have people to comply. And it's, I think it was, because I'm sorry, council, I can't see, to say that people who normally want to do it right, they normally go and get the permit. This is for the people who don't want to do it right or try to do it on the cheap. We need to be, because you have to have a licensed plumber, a licensed electrician to play around with electricity and play around with plumbing.
Preaching to the choir, I got a permit.
And like Mrs. Turner said, for the weekend warriors, this actually kind of helps them because if we send somebody out, a neighbor complains that they're adding on an addition, now you go out, issue the stop worker, they come in, get the permit, get the inspections, and move on. Under the way it is now, a neighbor decides they don't like it, you know, after it's done, they come into the city to raise enough, then we have to go to court. Court says, all right, you gotta tear it down. You didn't get the proper permits, and then everybody's unhappy. So it's preemptive. It's not just a penalty, it's also to preempt possible issues down there.
I have a question. Why wouldn't you want to be able to give the city more power to be able to stop people from wiring their own houses and get you on fire and string the water up? Why wouldn't you want, why wouldn't you want to do that?
How many homes are, are, how many actual remodeling jobs do they go out around in our city anyway, man? Maybe one or two at the present? And then you're gonna plague the whole people just because, how much construction? Aren't y'all doing it for the, for the commercial buildings? Don't you have an implemented plan to work over there and check their wiring? Do you check their wiring? Those companies like this, when they built these big major hotels, did you check their wiring?
Yeah, they had inspections.
Okay, well, you know, that's suffice. Why couldn't you came implement with just with the little, when they go get their permit, says, okay, look, when you start doing your wiring, we still need to go and check with the initial. And that's all you do. You tell them, they go get the permit, that, and then they can't get, you can't move on with your construction.
That's the point of this. If you don't get the permit, then we issue you the stop worker.
But you're gonna penalize them when they came, they say, well, they're not obliged. How much of a penalty are you gonna be on them?
It's five hundred dollars a day. If, if we tell you, you need to come in and get it inspected, and you say, you know what, I'm not gonna get it inspected anyway, and I'm still gonna do the wiring, then you're charged five hundred dollars a day for every day you're doing it.
Yeah, you know, how much, how much construction does go around, around our city? We don't really limit to the book that we got here. You know?
There's quite a bit of renovations and things going on around here.
Residential?
Yeah.
You know, I heard maybe in North Crest or the others, that they're maybe they're going up on, you know, there's just too many plants in there, those areas.
It's everywhere inside the city limits, it's like...
Well, we're about to, like, your preference is you have a Ongolia room.
Well, that's just because there's one...
There might be some people that live up in that area.
That's just an example of the most egregious thing that it's got.
Chris? Why, why five hundred and not two fifty or seven fifty? Why that number?
Uh, 'cause five hundred is the, the class C misdemeanor amount on there. It's up to, the, the council could set it for anywhere between zero and five hundred. And we could actually make a case to go up to two thousand dollars a day, but then you go from class C misdemeanor to certain code violations and things like that, and it gets a lot more complicated, so...
It's, it's, you know, come down a little bit, you know?
Don't follow in another patient because we're not talking very...
Well, it's part of the fine.
It's part of the ordinance.
Yes. It's...
It should be read as part of the ordinance.
It's where we set it to, to be, you don't wanna get...
How does, how does the council, you know, bring it down and that, you know, twenty years of, of, of emotional stuff, huh?
And the five hundred only comes into effect if you blatantly violate the stop worker.
And most people will go get your permit right away if they know they're gonna pay five hundred dollars a day. Some people will, you know, not go right away to get your permit if you're only gonna pay a hundred dollars a day. You know, the steeper the fee, it will make people wanna come in and get the permit and do things correctly.
A fee, do you put it on, on this one or the, or the next one?
It, it's part of this ordinance.
It's part of, but it is agenda item.
That's the, the fee you're talking about is, is the next one. This is a penalty for violation of the stop worker.
Then I'll go and make the motion to approve ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the citizen, city's code of ordinances to include administrative authority to issue stop work orders and levy penalties for failure to comply.
Can I have a motion by councilman Leves? May I have a second?
Are you leaving the fee at five hundred dollars a day?
Well, that's not till, that's not till, till he...
No, the, the five hundred dollars a day will be for... Yes, it's a disordinance.
Oh, okay, okay.
The hundred dollar permit fee for the roll-offs is a separate one. That's a permit fee.
Oh, okay.
This is a, this is a criminal penalty. That's the other one, sir.
Okay, then, um, to, for the fee, the fee to, for two fifty?
Two fifty, I'll bet.
Okay.
How much?
Two fifty a day. Not too many people can afford five hundred. I can't.
I second the motion. So the motion is second. Can somebody read that? I guess councilman, or I guess since you made the motion, can you read the caption? Oh, you read the, you read the word. The ordinance of the city of Forestville, Texas amending chapter one fifty of city's code ordinances implementing stop work orders, establishing requirements for issuance of stop work orders, establishing civil and criminal penalties for violations of stop work orders, providing a defense, establishing appeals procedure, and establishing effective data. So that's the full.
Not to exceed two hundred fifty dollars a day.
With a, with a criminal violation, not to exceed two hundred fifty, that was pretty.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Leves, second by councilman Nieto. Councilman O'Pace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Castillo?
Yes.
Paul Infavor?
Aye.
All closed. And before I move to the next one, I think I have an extra to do. Item G, consideration in action to approve portness authorizing aluminum wiring on the utility-owned electric distribution side of the justice electric service port connection?
No, it was his phone, S R E.
I thought y'all had them at all your meetings.
No.
Have what?
A laptop. I didn't bring a laptop. Mr. Heimer had it. He just asked me to bring the...
Here's my presentation.
Well, what we got, this is an, this is an ordinance that was tabled at the last meeting to get some more specificity on the supply side or distribution side. And so we sent it over to Mr. Dickey and the Phelps crew, and they made some edits and sent it back. It's all Mr. Dickey took. Isn't there something on our, our patio right there?
Yes.
There, there's some narrative, but I'll just put some pictures together for clarity's sake, and I was gonna... Well, I'll just do a, I'll, I'll email this to you or leave you with this thumb drive so that you'll have it. To be clear, we didn't edit the ordinance in any way. It was our understanding that it was, uh, there was really not a question as to how the ordinance was written, but what, the message that we got is that you wanted a little bit more clarity and explanation of what we were, what we were requesting and why we were requesting it. Now, if that's not accurate information, I'll be happy to speak differently, but, but the, the, after speaking with the mayor, I was under my impression that you'd like to see some pictures of what we're talking about changing the ordinance to affect and what's not gonna change going forward. Now...
What I requested was just to be specific as to what's included because distribution side to be all the way inside the house, you know, so it, it all how, it's all how someone interprets the...
Well, I understood, but, but in, in our industry, you know, you have essentially four pieces of, of electric service. You have the generation side, which is at the power plant. You have the transmission side, which brings it from the power plant to the substation. You have the distribution side, which goes from substation to the customer's house or the, or, or the commercial business at the meter. And then you have the customer side, which is anything past the meter into the house or into the business. So when we refer to things like the distribution side of things, that means on everything from the electric meter back into the, the Phelps system, back to the substation, is that's, that's the reference, and that's the industry standard name. And when we see things in codes and ordinances and safety manuals, that's what they mean by distribution side. So we were trying to write the ordinance in a way that the language in the ordinance matched things like the National Electric Safety Code and the OSHA standards and things of that nature. But we also understand that if this is something we do all day, every day, so when we start talking about the distribution, transmission, customer sides, it's something that makes a lot of sense to us, but to someone who doesn't do this every day, it's kind of an ambiguous term. So what I, what I've done is, and again, I'll give you this electronically, but we just took some simple pictures here. And I'll, I'll address the, the council a little closer just for the purposes of this. What you see here, and again, I'll get this to you before, this is just a simple distribution electric pole here with the wires and crossarms transformer at the top. What we're asking is for us, for the city to change their ordinance to allow aluminum wiring that goes from this transformer here at the pole down to the house, down to the electric meter, and into the electric meter box. This does not have anything to do with things past the electric meter, in the breaker box, in the walls, in the plugs, wiring ceiling fans. That code stays the same. And here's just another picture of, on the overhead side that dropped down. This is what we're looking at again. Anything Phelps would install, not what electricians would do. You talked about your codes and, and, uh, ordinance before, on the previous agenda item, this does not affect that in any way. Okay, you, you licensed electricians would still be doing copper wiring inside a home or inside a business. Here's an example on the underground side. You can see we have a pad mounted transformer right here. You've seen these, they're about this tall, the green boxes. What we're talking about is a wire that goes from the transformer underground to the electric meter. You see, it comes up this conduit from the ground into the electric meter. That's what we're asking to be okay to use aluminum. Now, what goes from this meter into the breaker box next to it is not what we're talking about, and it's not, not how we wrote the language. And again, I'll, I'll just read the summary to you. The ordinance language related to wiring on the customer side, which is beyond the electric meter, would remain unchanged, which I just hit on. The proposed language that we gave you meets all national safety and construction codes. If we left the ordinance as it is, the way you have it written now, this would require Phelps to remove all the existing aluminum primary, secondary, and service lines and replace them with copper. The long and short of that is every power line you see in this town is, is, most of it is aluminum. It would have to all be taken down, rebuilt, and, and changed out to copper to meet the city's code.
I've ordered.
Say it again. And so that, to change out every power line in the city that's aluminum to something that's copper and size it properly, uh, the cost would be tens of millions of dollars. And this is not a simple project. It would require rebuilding of lines, resetting utility poles. And it would be essentially taking all of the electric system that's inside the Forestville city limits, piece by piece, taking it apart, and rebuilding it with copper. And then from there, not just that, from all the transformers down to the homes, and then from the underground transformers to the homes and businesses would have to be replaced as well. Uh, and it would take us ten years, a minimum ten years to do that work on this, and, um, and again, we would be out of code compliance. But another reason we're asking this is most cities changed this ordinance and code to allow the aluminum distribution type wiring in the late seventies, early eighties. And again, I can't speak to why Florisville didn't adopt that code, uh, but, but they didn't. We're just trying to, again, we're not trying to, uh, to do anything that's uncommon. We're not trying to do anything that's unconventional. We're just, quite honestly, we're asking Florisville to, to change your code to match what the rest of the municipal codes in the state of Texas, you know, this, this isn't something out of the old times.
Can you explain that gray area in a commercial transformer that the metering point is a little bit different than, than a conventional residential metering point?
You mean, just not mounted on the wall right next to, or mounted on a pole? Well, essentially...
Okay, let's, uh, let's take, uh, Richardson's for example.
Richardson, the new Chevrolet place, the old one?
The new one.
Okay.
Uh, basically, that metering point is separate on the underground side, correct? So you're, you're, are you...
To be honest, I've, I've not seen the construction out there, so I mean, maybe... William Beslark is our...
Are you, are you including the, wanting to include aluminum all the way to inside their, their, their junction box, their disconnect?
If it's external to the building units, if you're talking about internal to, to the building note. So if you're talking about from a various former to the disconnect box, because you're suggesting in root, in case a CT meter, so the metering is set offside to the mark.
Correct.
It doesn't go through the...
Correct.
Meter attaches to the mark, so we get, the answer to your question is yes. If the disconnect's on the outside of the building, like the meter, the wire running from the transformer to the disconnect needs to be in this case.
Why wouldn't it be copper if we're doing it for residential as well?
Well, I wouldn't have to be. I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
You're making an exception. It's still underground going from, from one, from one disconnect point to another.
No, it would be the same as, right now, it's required with the top. The ordinance change that we're asking, it would be, it's gonna be, so for instance, right now, a hundred foot, you put in a hundred foot copper, that's just from the, that's not a foot.
Well, I'm, I'm familiar with the pricing, but I'm familiar with the pricing just...
Well, I, I know where the rest of the council may not understand.
But it was in our package as well. So, so, you know, just for transparency purposes, you know, there's two different, you know, whenever you say from a... know, there's two different, you know, whenever you say from a transformer side to the, to the house, there's actually two different scenarios there. One can, one on the commercial side could be aluminum, the other one on the residential side would have to be copper, because theoretically it's not a metering point. I just need some clarification as to, you know, what are we gonna include whenever the inspector goes out to inspect and be like, there's aluminum in the, in this two-inch pipe going from, from, from this meter point?
Well, I, I would expect that an inspector would know what's the distribution side of the electric system and know what's the customer side. I mean, I would hope for your sake, your inspectors know the difference in that.
But the inspector will hear to it.
No, and I can't speak to that, I mean, that's a staffing issue or consulting issue that the city would have, and, but no, I believe that, I mean, that would be something that, I know I wouldn't hire a licensed inspector to know the difference in the two systems.
How this question came about is actually, staff was meeting with Mr. Bassett, is we were trying to take care of some things, and we've been, some utilities that have been installed, that we had to go back, and some of them weren't compliant and some of them weren't, and so what we agreed upon at that time was to have, in the future, if developments go forward, to have Phelps come in and to approve the utility plan that is issued by that. During that time, Mr. Bassett pointed out to staff that this ordinance typically, as Mr. Dickey said, was done in the setting reserve, late eighties, that the city has not made that change. I asked him to send me a request in reference to that, so that we could adjust that, we keep it to the attorney, it was going back and forth, back and forth, to get the labels just straight, and so we wanted to make sure we had clear understanding of distribution side to the aluminum, to the residential side of aluminum, reference of who could and couldn't use that. But right now, as he said, they're not in compliance to what our ordinance is, which is really kind of outdated. So we wanted to address it. That's how it came up, is actually trying to work collaboratively with Phelps as we go forward, and all these subdivisions that we have going forward, and we discovered some imperfections, is that a...
Yes.
Yes, some imperfections that we had to work through.